I want to just welcome everybody to this roundtable meeting and I'm going to just read the call of the meeting quickly. This meeting, which is taking place on Monday, November 16th, 2015, will be a roundtable working meeting between the school committee, the city council, as with all public, excuse me, as with all roundtable meetings, there is no public comment, no votes will be taken. And the meeting is not televised, however, I have been informed that folks are recording the meeting. And I want to welcome everybody. We have three main issues that we're going to be discussing tonight. The first issue is a timely issue that happened just today and we want to have a brief overview from the superintendent, the city manager, and the police commissioner regarding the security issues that we face today in the suburban area as well as in the city. And then the main topic today is the discussion regarding the early childhood task force report, which we're delighted to have for us tonight. And then to wrap up the two-hour meeting, we will spend a short time with an update on the school building issues at both the King Building, which will be opening, along with the Aston Avenue Opera School, and then the pending work that will be done to the King Building and the Cambridge Street Opera School, which will also be happening very soon. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the manager and ask him if he and his team will give us an update on the issues that we face today.
Governor, Commissioner Hawes, and superintendent, on what happened early this morning. You know, in summary, there was an email message delivered through the internet concerning bomb threats at public schools in Cambridge. How is the Commissioner Phil everybody?
So, good evening. So around 4:48 this morning, there was a blog posted on an anonymous blog site, making reference to the fact that there were going to be some bombs placed in some schools in Cambridge, Massachusetts, referred to as Cambridge City Schools. It happened to be another individual, a third party, that saw the posting on the anonymous blog and then turned around and forwarded it to our attention around 6 o'clock this morning. Once we were notified, I reached out to the school department, actually spoke to Jim Money this morning, just let him know we had the blog, that we were starting to initiate an investigation into it, keeping in mind that this was an anonymous blog that was not sent directly to any city officials or the city administration or the school department, that this was just something that was placed out on a blog site, nonspecific. And the only reason why we got it was because some person saw it on the blog site and sent it to us. With that, we worked out an initial plan where we had officers team up with school department personnel and do a walkthrough of all the schools, walk around the schools. The instructions to them were to identify anything out of place whatsoever and bring it to our attention. We also brought in some of our bomb technicians to be available in any event that something was found. After that search was done, there was nothing found in any of the 13 schools, and I maintained communication with superintendent all through the morning. We in fact met with the city manager at 8:30 and just worked out what we were doing with respect to response to that anonymous threat.
I would just add, Mr. Mayor, that on a difficult day like this, this is when you realize one of the many things that makes Cambridge great. We were able to, as the Commissioner just said, and you referred to as well, meet early this morning, we heard the news sometime shortly after 6:00 about this. By the time, you know, we got into work, we went to the office, the first step that we had to take was to make sure, as the Commissioner just said, that our safety and security go along with the police department, we were able to check out the schools, make sure there was nothing apparent there that would cause any danger, any imminent danger to anybody. And that's when we, after we met at 8:30, we kind of launched into our protocol, protocol by the way, that I referred to in the letter that I think you all saw today. This book, which I believe most of you have, certainly everyone in the school, in every single classroom, in every single office within every single school, this was an emergency operations plan that was developed fairly recently between the school department, the fire department, the police department, Cambridge health lines, and the city, which gives us instructions and protocols about how to respond in an emergency, particularly page, there is actually a tab, a page in here called bomb threat. And we turned to that page, and it calls for an assessment, threat assessment. The main factors in our threat assessment today, whereas the Commissioner just said, it's very generalized, email, not sent to him, not sent to me, not sent to the manager, not sent to a school principal, nothing like that, no phone calls, no names, nothing attached to it, no school was identified, you know, that it was Cambridge or Latin, or Cambridge, there were no names of schools that were listed as specific targets. And we know from this document that when those threats, email, or phone calls are generalized, that tends to be a little less, to be taken for less, a little bit less worse. Second factor in our threat assessment were those walkthroughs that the Commissioner just described. So taking those two factors together, we decided, this is really difficult stuff, right? It's easy to sit, it's easy to sit a few hours later and say, oh, should it this, should it that, should it this, should it that. In the moment, we determined that there was no threat, there was no credible threat before us, and we decided to keep the schools open and to communicate with folks as quickly as possible. That meeting that the Commissioner referred to began at 8:30, we ended up probably a little bit after 9:00, 9:13 or so. We went our separate ways. I went back to my office to begin drafting a letter, reviewed it with the manager, reviewed it with the police commissioner, to make sure that all the facts that we had at the time were accurate and precise. This is one of the tensions that you have in communicating with crisis, right? Is you want to get information out fast, but you also want it to be accurate. Sometimes those two objectives can be in competition. Right? So we chose, rather than to just simply rush through it, get something out as quick as we could, to make sure it was accurate. And the message that I sent out to initially all of our staff, the emails, the website, and a number of other methods came about 10:45 this morning. So, this all went on fine. You know, we didn't respond today, there was no manifestation of this right off. Very difficult day for everybody, clearly in the aftermath of this past weekend, everyone is on trial, third, and on high anxiety. Well, we understand, well, myself, and everybody in this room, and everybody in the community, everybody in the country, everybody in the world, which is why we took this so seriously and wanted to communicate in the way that we did. I just want to acknowledge again, Mr. Mayor, if I can, the police commissioner, the city manager, and Mr. Money, who I think isn't here somewhere right now, on his way, for their help and support in this situation.
Just one thing I would add briefly is that in the aftermath of situations like this, one of the best things we can do is gather together and review the incident and review our reaction to the incident to see whether or not we can make some tweaks, some improvements to what we did. So the Commissioner, and Lisa, and Ellen, and myself, and superintendent Jim Money, along with the fire chief, along with the procedure G. Covey, and a couple others that are just getting me right now, we'll all meet and we will reevaluate our response, how we reacted, and what we think might be better to change moving forward. And the other thing is, documents like this, we also have all our public information people too with us, and has been prepared documents on how to respond and serve, those need to be updated all the time, so we will also make sure that we are constantly, that we are updating and looking.
Thank you. And at this time, if we don't have further comments, we can turn to the main focus of what we're here for today, which is the unveiling, so to speak, of Cambridge Early Childhood Task Force report. And I'm assuming, Ellen, that the city manager is going to kick this off, the other supporting act over there?
So, to you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and the school committee, we as a task force are very pleased to present this plan to the city. This is a result of about 15 months' worth of work that we started in February of 2014. The superintendent of schools joined me in leading this task force, and we were assisted by key members of our staff and a very hard-working task force. I know that there are essentially probably 90% of the task force here tonight, if they wouldn't mind just standing up so that those on the council school committee can recognize all of you for the work on this, I appreciate that. So I also want to introduce our consultants, David Jacobson and Linda Warren, if they would stand up. And I'm sure that they did a great job in guiding us through this process. Let me begin by saying, initially, when this came to be, you know, what was going through my head was, you know, and I will admit, I don't think I really understood sort of the depth of what a great program can be. And I certainly learned an awful lot from our consultants and from the task force members, those members of the community who are involved in family daycare, those members of the community who provide childcare services and early learning services, those from the school department and those from our own human services department. Really did a lot, I think, to educate each other and all of us about what a great program could be. And we looked at the research across the country. And what I thought initially was going to be the answer was, we're going to get a slug of money and be able to buy a building and build a building. And although I do believe that that is what we will do in the future, I think for the first few years of this process, the most important thing we can do is really understand what the needs are in the community. For various reasons, whether they be people's comfort zone with where their child is taught today, and when I say child or children today, I'm talking about right from birth to the third grade age. So that's the focus group that we're talking about in terms of children and their needs and those that we are targeting for this new program. So in thinking about all the needs that are important to people, one thing was crystal clear to me, not everybody wanted to see their programs dismantled and thrown into one funnel that comes out looking just like it's the city of Cambridge program. People want to hold on to the identity of their own programs. Now, for us to do that, we have to create quality across all the different issues within those programs. We want to have a quality program that makes it so that every child, no matter whether your kid for are taught, are learning at a level that can make them proficient by the time they reach the very grade. We learned about how there are so many needs, resource needs, there are educational needs, there are training needs, there is such a gap in the informational needs that people have, people are really questioning, where do I go to find this information? If I am a brand-new resident in this city, or if I've just had my first child, how can I make sure I'm lying in correctly to be able to get the appropriate information? So as we talk to parents, early childcare and health experts representing the community-based organizations and family childcare settings, as we talk to our school leaders and our human services leaders, it became apparent that there was this huge list of needs that we had to make sure were going to be adapted and dealt with in depth. And we envisioned, you know, a process where we will build strength across all these areas. It was so unbelievable to listen to the stories and the struggles that people had in providing these services and the burden on people to deal with all kinds of issues, whether they be language barriers, whether they be disabilities, income, lack of transportation, lack of information, this was just widespread. So, and we're a pretty advanced community. I think we're a community that puts ourselves on trying to do things the right way and being more comprehensive. We found that there was this real gap between really what we think we are doing and what really the needs are. So we went and we, and one of the reasons why it took this task force, you know, every task force we have gives you a date, and then it usually gets extended. In this case, this was extended for good reason. We conducted a needs assessment and we looked at many of the issues I have discussed, and I think, you know, we felt that those are the kinds of issues that really need to be dealt with comprehensively. And I think our, I know our consultants will tell you that they have looked at the best practices across the country, they have examined many cities, and if we want to build quality, if we want to build strength, and if we want to build reliability in a program, if we could follow the recommendations of the task force and begin to develop a program, we will be covering all those areas. We will then have a model which has strength all the way across, no matter who's providing the care, they will all have the same kind of training, they will all have good resources, they will all have the opportunity to have services that families need. There are families in crisis, there are families who have disabled children, there are families with parents that are disabled. There are so many issues to be dealt with that it is just, it is mind-boggling to think we could just open a building and run a program and everything will be fine. So if you trust that this is a huge ocean that we're in, I think, and you follow this plan, you will understand, I think, the work that went into this. I want to thank, you know, we had this very, very dedicated team of people who worked a long time and were pretty responsive in terms of attending meetings and all. And I want to mention some names here who I think went over and above what I would call is normal, and that would be Mary Ann McDowell and Claire Spinner from the school department, Nancy Toddler and Leanne Ellis, and Ellen Semenoff, who were together as a five-person coordinating group for this committee, did a fantastic job. And they worked very closely, converted many extra hours with our consulting to put us on the right track. In terms of financing this part of my whole plan on this was to make sure that our finance people were also involved, so that at the end of the day, I wasn't handing something to Gina and Louis, Claire Spinner, and saying, okay, here it is, now you have to worry about it. They followed this process all the way along, so the recommendations we make to you are within the projections of the finance director and the budget director, they will be accommodated in our budgets, and we don't have to do it in a way that says, well, if we spend this money, what are we going to lose? So we've built it into our projections, we've been watching this for the last year and a half, and moving forward, we believe that we'll be recommending to you somewhere around $200,000 for the rest of this fiscal year, about $1 million to $1,300,000 for our next fiscal year, and then possibly doubling that in the third fiscal year. That, I believe, will be the way that we can start this program, start it correctly, provide the right resources to all of those who need it, get a really good assessment of what the needs are in each of these various groups that do provide the service, and make sure that this whole system is aligned. So I am really confident and I am feeling really good about the way that this went as a study and the fact that it dropped back, the plan that we're presenting here, when I say dropped back, it dropped back in terms of expectation. I think we're building this from the ground up. I think we're providing support, I keep saying I think, I want to say I know, it's a bad habit of mine, I know that building it from the bottom up is the right way to go. And if we do that, we will in fact have a strong program at all levels, and we will build the public information part, we will build the educational part, we will build the training part, we will build the support services. Our consultants will tell you that if this happens, and happens the right way, and if we stick with this in Cambridge, they believe that this will be a model for the entire country. And I think we have done that many times in many ways. This city has a product on issues that have really proven to be good models in a lot of places. You know, so I want to turn this over maybe to Jeff, ask Jeff to say a few words, and that Ellen, Mary Ann, and our consultants are certainly available, and I hope that, you know, people will take the time to really analyze the report, and we can always have the time to discuss it to another benefit if you think that's helpful.
Thanks, Rich. What a great experience this has been to serve on this task force. This is about as important as it gets, right? We know, and it's important, I think you're going to just refer to the title of the report, starting early, addressing achievement and opportunity as a Cambridge. We know that achievement gaps, which is of course concerned for every single person in this community, that they do not begin in the fifth grade or the eighth grade or at the high school. They begin way earlier than that. And so the right way to really make a difference and to reduce and eventually eliminate those gaps is to start early. We know that from research, and we know it just from good common sense, working on this task force and listening to so many of the providers, as well as the community of schools folks, as well as city Cambridge folks, has really broadened my understanding of different approaches and how they can fit together, and how it's not, as I think the manager said, it's not about trying to funnel everything into one approach, and everybody do exactly the same thing. What is important is that, is that we have good access to programs for every child. And every child may have different needs, and every child may have those needs met differently by different programs. What's important here is the access. When we talk about equity, we've said this room many times in particular, equity, and something being equitable, something being equal or identical, those are not synonyms. Equity is about access. And that's what this report is really about, and that's what's so powerful about this task force. This task force report seeks to say, okay, for every young child, how can we give him or her access to high-quality early education? And we realize that it's going to take whole community effort in order to make that happen. We have some ways to do it in public schools, I'm looking, I know, and I got a lot of Harris, and thank you for being on the task force, and thank you for being here tonight, Principal Lee, for what you made of the academy, you're a great leader in this city. We have a program over at the FMA, we have other programs in the schools, but those do not begin at the ages that we're really talking about here, right, that zero, one, two here. How can we really get kids on the right path? And so as you listen to the findings of this report, I ask you to think about it, not just on an adult perspective, that is, what's the manager going to do, or what am I going to do, or Ellen, Mary Ann, Claire, but what might the experience be like for a child? Think about some newborn, maybe neurotic, maybe it's your neighbor, maybe it's your grandchild, or your niece or nephew. Think about some young child that you know, and say, how can we hold your hand for the next eight years? And how can we walk along a path that the adults in this community have come together and said, this is the right path, we're going to set you up for success, so that by the time, as you mentioned, that whole around grade three reading, that you're going to be a proficient reader by grade three. Any elementary school teacher will tell you, it's an almost a leech shape at this point, but it's true, that in the grades from kindergarten or JK through grade three, students and teachers learn to read, and it's starting in grade three and moving forward, they read to learn. And so if you are not a proficient reader by grade three, if you haven't learned to read, it's going to be really hard for you to read, to learn, the curriculum gets more and more complex. So this is the aim, and I believe wholeheartedly, having read this report, and been with the staff of these incredible people the last year, year and a half, that this is the pathway to get there. We can make that difference. We can blend equity and excellence. We can find ways to give everyone an excellent opportunity here to be a proficient third-grade reader, and do it for all the kids, right? That's excellence and equity, they go together, they have to go together in order to reach the very lofty, yet realizable goals of this report. So it's about access, it's about coherence. It's a program that should be thoughtful, the adults have to come together, as they have in this task force, and say, you're going to do this part, I'm going to do this part, I'm going to put the child at the center. When the child is at the center, and when the adults in the room or the community come together and say, we each have our parts to play, and those parts are complementary in nature, that's where children soar. So we think this is a tremendous opportunity here. We look forward to engaging with the members of the city council and the school committee around this incredibly important topic, not just tonight, but going forward in the weeks to come.
I just want to add one other thing. So what I love about this report is, it's a report that does not require another report, it is an action plan, it is an action plan. There are actions that we can begin with an appropriation from the city council, and the hiring of two staff people a little bit later this fiscal year, you know, for the first of the year, and that work that they can have done, and then a report back on what their work is in the beginning of the next fiscal year. And then we can talk about what will we do from July 1 of '16 through June 30 of '17. I think the report does a really great job of saying what the important milestones are and the goals. And really, this report was reread, reread, and rewritten with all of you in mind, trying to make sure that we were thinking about the conversations we've had, the hours we've all spent in talking about this subject matter. So it doesn't rule out a facility someday that the city may own and operate in combination with human services in the schools. I think that they will come, but it also doesn't make it so that people who are comfortable in their own cultures and in their own sort of areas where they get the services for their children now, to feel that those are gone. I think what I learned in this process, those really need to be kept alive if we're going to have success in this city. We shouldn't be dictating to people who it is that gives your child that kind of education and care, we should be saying, we provide a system that makes it equal across the board if you are in Cambridge, that's the quality of education from birth to third grade that your child will be getting, appearing for the rest of their education.
Well, there may not be much more for Mary Ann, and I would say, but we're going to try to just walk you through how we got here, and then obviously have time for you all to speak and ask questions. So we started with the help of our consultants to look at all of the national and state, at the national and state research and best practices, because the area of early childhood is actually one where there is a growing consensus about what's necessary and appropriate to support children and families. We then did, we then looked locally, and we both did surveys of all of our local providers, as well as a whole series of focus groups. Some of you may have at some point participated in them. We did focus groups with parents, with teachers, with principals, with community-based preschools, with family childcare providers, with the family liaisons, with the literacy ambassadors, with the Zero to Eight Council. We were trying to make sure that we could understand what the local circumstances are and speak with the folks who, parents who know what their children need, and the providers who currently try to work within this system. And so we spent a fair amount of our early time both looking at the research and understanding what the local needs were.
I'll talk briefly about the task for, task force findings. What emerged from our needs assessment and the national research actually confirmed the availability of a number of very strong services and programs in Cambridge, but it also confirmed significant challenges that families and providers face without a coherent system that links them together. So there are five key findings. The first finding is around access to information. And so the way we'll present the findings, we'll present the finding, and then there's a quote, actually, from a person in each of the areas. But first, access to information. Accessing information for families and providers, as I said, is often challenging. Families reported, they found it very, very confusing to find appropriate services. And early childhood service providers actually reported the challenges of keeping abreast of the full range of services in Cambridge. And so, and that's why that is, the quote is there, it takes a while to get plugged in, know about everything that exists. groups, that by the way, were facilitated by Nancy Todd, who did an amazing job, and Leanne Ellis, who really worked with the consultants to really do the survey online. The second finding we found relates to maintaining and improving quality of our programs. We know, and we admit, that quality is not consistent throughout our early, our community's early childhood programs. Organizations report challenges in both maintaining program quality and also hiring, as you know, and retaining early childhood qualified staff, given the financial constraints. We heard that consistently from the early childhood providers. So, maintaining and continuously improving quality around our programs is vital. The next finding has to do with aligning and coordinating services, as you've heard earlier this evening, between and among family support services, family childcare, infant and toddler programs, community-based preschools, city-run preschools and the public schools. Children and benefits, children and families, of course, benefit when services are coordinated. This is true for all families, but critical for many of our families who work with multiple agencies and services. For those families, we must do a better job of coordinating services, both for the family and their children. Which leads to the next key theme around addressing the gaps in our services. Families, providers, as well as our local experts, identified several gaps in critical areas, including the need for additional support for social, emotional, skill development, mental health support, family engagement, families in crisis, dual language learners, and of course, children with disabilities. We know, we've identified these needs, and this is a critical part of our work going forward. And finally, many Cambridge families find finding high-quality, affordable early childhood services is difficult and presents considerable financial hardships. So, making high-quality home visiting, infant-toddler care and preschool more affordable for Cambridge families is a clear priority for families, for early childhood providers and for the task force. So, the task force used all of this information, coupled with research from the national models across the country, to develop a set of three overarching priorities that guided the development of our recognition, of our recommendations. First, as you've heard from the superintendent, start early. Research from around the country points to the need to start early, as early as with pregnant mothers. Starting early is critical to addressing achievement and opportunity gaps, which ultimately lead to improved student outcomes for all of our children. The second, as you've heard, is about quality. To improve outcomes for all of Cambridge's children, services must be of the highest quality, and in this city, we have the resources to be able to do that. Expanding access without ensuring quality is ineffective and quite frankly, short-sighted on our part. Research cited in our report, here's a quote, "High-quality early learning, especially for children at risk, has been shown to significantly improve early literacy, language and math skills, and to decrease special education placements by nearly 50% through second grade, and reduce grade retention by up to 33% by eighth grade." Finally, we must build a coherent mixed delivery system. And we talked about that phrase a lot, that concept a lot, and I don't think we all fully understood what that meant. What that means is that community services throughout all of the organizations, the family childcare, infant-toddler, community-based preschools, city preschools, Cambridge Human Services, and the public schools, need to be coordinated and aligned and working better together. The adequate outcomes of children in poor-quality care often cannot be fully remedied in the whole structure of a K through 12 educational system. Because of the need for non-educational services such as mental and behavioral healthcare, to focus only on the education of children beginning with kindergarten is to ignore the science of early development and deny the importance of early learning experiences. I'll turn it over to Ellen, who will share one.
We're just showing you how schools in this city can share their, the microphone. So, now, we're going to walk you through the goals. There are five goals that ultimately were identified, and the first one is one that I'm sure is near and dear to your hearts as well as ours, really is access to and affordability of high-quality, and you can see it's underlined, early education and care services. The approach that we are taking is really in, right now, in three different areas. First, you heard Mary Ann talk about the need for more and better information for parents. And so, one of the recommendations within this is to support the efforts of the Kids' Council and others in developing what's currently called as Find It Cambridge, which is a rich resource base for parents and childcare providers and other service providers to be able to access information about programs and to access it anywhere they are. We can talk more about it at a later time, but the critical to everything we've heard is how do we make it possible for families to understand, as well as for other providers to understand what's available in Cambridge? It's not good enough to have it if people don't know what it is or how to find it. Second area is around home visiting. There's a lot of research which demonstrates the value of high-quality home visiting services. Right now, we have a number of different programs within the city of Cambridge that provide home visiting. Some of them run by the school system, some of them run by the city, some of them run by city agencies. And one of the things that the task force was clear, we needed to do was study what we have, figure out who's being served by it, figure out how can we align it better, and then ultimately, how can we support it for the families who most need it? The other areas are really to expand and work on early childhood services for birth age three and for the three and four-year-olds. So, really, the largest piece of the birth to eighth, age three, is really supporting parents as their, as the most important and first teacher of children. We have within the city a number of parenting support activities. Some of you have participated in them over the years. They're run by both city and community agencies and by the schools. And we need to increase access to the resources we have. We need to do a better job of coordinating what we've got, the playgroups, the workshops, baby university, all the Center for Families programs, the Parenting Journey, the Literacy ambassadors, the Pathways program. We need to align them, we need to figure out which pieces of them need to be universal, and we need to figure out how and when we target services to those families who are most in need. So, one of the big recommendations coming out of this is to do much more work to both look at, align, and then provide further support for all of the parenting and family support activities that exist within the city. Then, the question of what happens for three and four-year-olds? The way in which we approach that through the goals here is first, to provide some additional scholarship to existing high-quality programs in order to support more low-income families to make sure that they have access. The second area is to actually develop a pilot program to combine the efforts of both quality, professional development and affordability. And we got a lot of help from our consultants on that, and we will be doing much more work over the course of the rest of this year and in the year coming up. Part of the, the city manager alluded to this earlier. We know from the earlier work that we did that almost all of the four-year-olds within this city are currently enrolled in a program. So, we are not a community in which there are a large number of four-year-olds who are not currently in care. Whether children are in the highest-quality care, that's certainly one issue. Whether they're in care that is affordable to their families is another issue, and whether their families have access to the programs that they most want. So, we were not in a crisis where we needed to move immediately for four-year-olds without taking all of the steps which would ensure that we have across our city the highest-quality programs for all three and four-year-olds. And so, that's why the recommendations here are a little bit different from what some people might have thought they were going to be. We will be looking at all of our existing programs. We will be looking at what most of the families want, which we heard, which are full-day, full-year programs. And so, we will be evaluating that as we move forward. We will, as most communities which have looked at this, begin with providing more support for low-income children, and ultimately, as we move forward with the pilot and evaluate it over the years, figure out how do we expand support beyond the first set of children that we're serving. The other thing you'll see is, one of the recommendations is actually a recommendation to the school committee. We heard from teachers, from parents and from principals, the question about the feasibility of separating the junior kindergarten programs from the kindergarten programs. So, one of the task force recommendations is to the school committee to take a look at the feasibility of doing that from both a quality perspective and to meet families' Now, it's back to Mary Ann for program quality.
The second goal is focused on, as you can imagine, program quality. And there are three specific recommendations around this goal. First, we must build our internal capacity to improve program quality. We had a conference, a mini-conference on Saturday entitled, "The Children We Share", eighty-five participants, coordinated by Catherine Jones, who oversees our birth through grade three alignment grant, eighty-five participants, family childcare providers, early childhood providers, infant-toddler care, principals from the high school, Mr. Fantini was there as well, and Dr. Laura Washington was the keynote speaker, who has done this work around aligning and coordinating systems of early childhood care on a national basis. She works out of Washington DC. But she shared an interesting quote. She said, "Our knowledge base is exploding in the field of early childhood education, yet we don't have a shared understanding of what early childhood educators need to know and do differently." And she said, "The gap between the vision, the vision that's in this report that we're sharing with you this evening, and the reality, is the place where we need to lead." And I was struck by that, and it moves us to the next recommendation. We feel strongly that we're recommending to create a position of an early childhood director and someone to support the work around enhancing program quality in all of our, all of our programs throughout the city. And we are committed to doing that at the school level with our own internal resources as well. The primary responsibility of these individuals will be to work closely with the early childhood providers, educators, program leaders and community members, to develop that shared understanding of what quality is and build the professional capacity of both the providers and the leaders of our programs. Our leaders and our early childhood providers are asking us for that. They want professional development. They want to come together with the kindergarten teachers, with the principals. And last Saturday was a wonderful beginning, but it was the beginning of first step. And we told people that it was a first step, and they're looking forward to the continued conversation and deepening the work. The next commitment that we're making, in addition to the ongoing collaboration, this plan needs to address improvements in how children transition into kindergarten. As someone who's been in the district for a very long time, it seems like we talk about this a lot, and we've had a lot of beginnings and endings to this transition plan. But I will say that this birth-for-grade-three alignment grant that we have been engaged in for the last year has provided leadership and support for both bringing together twenty-five early childhood service providers, preschool providers, teachers, an after-school program director, someone from, Jose Wendell, from physical health and mental health providers, all working together to define what we can do together around professional development, and they also developed a draft transition document. They are very excited about this work. We've built this foundation. Unfortunately, the grant funding ends December 31st. However, I believe, we believe that we need to harness the energy now that we have, both from the leadership alignment team and with the eighty-five people that were together on Saturday, to really have the support of the community, and they're looking for us together to lead this work and coordinate this work moving forward. So, we're excited about the possibilities, and we feel as if we owe it to the early childhood community who's been asking for this for a very long time. Which leads us to the third goal around building, building family partnerships and supporting the work that we have been doing already. You heard at the beginning of the presentation that families are asking for user-friendly access and, quite frankly, face-to-face support in helping them navigate all of the resources in Cambridge. So, we need to build upon the work that's already underway in the city to develop a community-wide understanding of family engagement, but family engagement that is culturally responsible to the needs of our families. In order to encourage and support family participation and advocacy, we are recommending that we include families on the early childhood governance board, and I'll talk about that in a few minutes, the idea around what is the governance of this new body of work that we'll be doing. But family voices are critical. It was so important to have family childcare providers on the task force. Some of them are here this evening. They bring a perspective to this work that we need to acknowledge, appreciate and listen to more. We're also hoping to develop a public awareness campaign, similar to the last, similar to the last talk campaign, that we developed in the city many years ago, and many people are still referring to that work. We're also, as Alan said, we are recommending a review of the parent education programs so that we have a continuum of services. We talked about, similar to what we talked about on the school side, what are the supports for all families? What are the supports for some families? We need an additional kind of support in addition to what all families get. And then, what are those supports that are needed for those few families that are really working with multiple agencies? And so, we want, we want indeed to know that in our work. And I think, I think Alan was going to talk about really access to quality.
So, one of the other critical goals here is improving access to both physical and mental health services. The main focus here is actually in two areas. One is to collaborate. Many of you are aware that the Cambridge Public Health Department just completed its Community Health Improvement Plan. We had strong recommendations in the area of both physical and mental health, and the idea is, again, not trying to set up things that are disconnected from what else is going on, but to deeply collaborate with the Public Health Department, the Cambridge Health Alliance and other providers around implementation of the Community Health Improvement Plan action steps. In addition, expanding access to quality mental health and behavioral services. And there's a particular area, as many of you know, the city has been fortunate to be able to the city has been fortunate to be able to support training and behavioral health support to family childcare and center-based childcare programs. This was an outgrowth of the earlier Blue Ribbon Task Force on early childhood. And those services are critical to supporting the staff of programs to ensure that children are able to remain in programs. It's a national crisis that I think you're aware of. Children who end up getting expelled, particularly children of color, getting expelled from early childhood programs if they can't even get to kindergarten. The outcomes for those children, clearly their life outcomes are not what we would want for them. And so being able to provide support onsite to programs and to support programs in talking to parents about the needs of their children, modeling behavior in the classroom. We've had wonderful experience with the work that's been done. And we are recommending expansion of the Early Years Program to be able to provide additional support to both family childcare and early childhood centers.
And the final goal is around developing a shared governance and leadership structure. As I mentioned before, we're recommending the development of an early childhood governance board representing a full range of stakeholders in Cambridge's early education and care community. The board will establish three committees, working committees. One on access, affordability, and quality. One to address family engagement, coordinate family engagement. And one to address the issues of health that Alan just mentioned. The second is, as I said before, we are recommending the creation of the Early Childhood Director with support for program quality improvement. We see these, the vision for these positions is that they are a joint report between the city side and the school side. And we are committed to working together to support these individuals and the full participants and governance of the board. We will be developing a strategic plan, strategic outcomes. It's very clear to us that we're asking for resources for this. We need to be clear to you, the leaders in our community and to our community, what the outcomes are that we expect from this and to establish periodic updates to you on how we're doing with this work. It's a big part of the conversation with the task force. And we need to have that right from the get-go. And then finally, as I mentioned before, we want to strengthen public awareness and the commitment. We talked about a public awareness campaign. But really, we'll be talking further about the shared governance and the leadership. And so for that, I think we turn it back to Alan to turn the budget back to him.
So just to quickly walk you through what, as the city manager indicated, we anticipate coming back to the city council later this fall, really in December, to ask for some funds for us to be able to continue this work between now and June 30th before the end of this fiscal year. We are getting ourselves in a place where we can be really launching for the new fiscal year. We, right now, and you can see the categories right now, we, in our rough calculations, we think that what we would need to roll this out for the first year is about $1.3 million. We will be doing the work in January, February, and March in order to be able to come back to the city manager and the school superintendent, ultimately to the council with a recommendation about exactly what the funds are. But we're looking, as you can see significantly, to work on the pilot, to expand affordability, a huge amount of work on program quality, on alignment, do the studying that we need to do to make sure that we can launch this well. I mentioned that we would be asking for some additional funds for the Early Years Project, which provides the behavioral support to the family childcare programs. And additional funding to ensure that the family engagement programs we have can do, continue to do the work and expand in working with families.
And just as I said earlier, I see this as expanded funding, not challenging any monies that are currently on the table. So people shouldn't feel like if we support this and, you know, what's going to have to be cut? We have built this into our projections moving forward. Louis has been watching this number for the last year and a half to make sure that it's built. And believe me, he's been watching this.
We were just going to ask David Jacobson and Linda Warren to just give you a couple of minutes from their perspective, having worked with the task force over the last 15 months.
So I'm David Jacobson. I'm a senior advisor at the Education Development Center in Waltham and also run something called the Birth Through Third Grade Learning. And I'm a Cambridge resident, I should add. I would like to draw your attention to page eight of the report. And you'll see there, it's also page six on the slides, page six on the slides or page eight of the report. And what you'll find there are three priorities. Start early, quality is essential, and build a coherent, holistic, free system. And I think what Linda and I would like to share with you is the way that those three priorities resonate, not only before we learn who we need as a president here in Cambridge, but with the national, what we see moving forward nationally in early childhood and with the research. And, you know, one way to think about this is that the extent of achievement gaps that are associated with poverty and with low-income families are such that we are not going to address them in any one year. We need high quality at every year. And so I think what communities across the United States are finding is that as important as high-quality pre-K for four-year-olds is, we actually, it's starting too late. We were fortunate to have Greg Hagan, the chief of pediatrics at the Cambridge Health Alliance, on our task force, who very early on, about a year ago, made the point to the task force that prenatal, there's no better research than on prenatal care. And that really continues for, you know, the first year of life, the second year of life, the third year of life. And some are even saying that by, you know, it's too late by the time a child is four to address the extent of challenges associated with poverty. And so these, you know, that first priority starts early really begins with that. And then the other thing we're seeing nationally is that, and I think Mary Ann has said that, really everyone has said this this evening, is that we see disconnects. We have, not only in Cambridge but across the country, a fragmented early childhood system. And so what we're seeing is a great need to do system building, to do alignment, to do better coordination. And that's everything from transition planning to joint professional development, to improving, having systems across the city to improve quality. So those are, you know, that's where these priorities are coming from. And I feel like it's very helpful to then look at the five overarching recommendations through that lens.
Okay, and I want to just...
Just...
Ah, thank you. Oh, wow. So I want to pick up on Mayor David, ending with talking about that fragmentation. I mean, we are all part of this pipeline for college and career readiness. All of us are invested in that concept at this table. And the part that we're working on here is the early childhood part, which is the most fragmented part of that pipeline. It looks different than any other part of the pipeline. We look at, quality looks different in early childhood. And it's not necessarily because we're looking at different things in early childhood. We really are, when we think about quality, we're thinking about quality environments, highly engaging environments, where youngsters are intellectually stimulated. We're looking at environments where there are a lot of higher order and higher-level interactions with children and adults. And we're also looking at instructional practices that have a lot of evidence behind it. So it's not really very different than what we're talking about in elementary, so in middle schools, in high school, and all that, that pipeline leads right to college and career readiness. So what we're seeing and what we saw through the needs assessment here is that there are a very large number of high-quality programs already operating in Cambridge. In fact, I just found out on Saturday that you've got one of the highest ratings at one of your programs statewide, which is at the level four rating, which is, you need to be very proud of. It's very hard to get. But not everyone looks at quality in the same way. We don't have one set of standards in early childhood as we do in public school systems and in college. We don't have one set of assessments to guide, you know, the practices. So quality, we're really trying to get to the point here in early childhood in this report in that we are marrying the concepts of quality and outcomes, believing and trying to walk that walk that we're not going to talk about outcomes in education, in early childhood anymore without talking about quality environments. And so that is why we have emphasis on quality here, is getting people on the same page. And when we talk about the pilot, we are really talking about looking at what we already have as working in Cambridge and building on that and learning from that to help inform how to go forward. So thank you.
Thank you. I think we have some folks who lined up to... So Ellen, am I correct? I think I just didn't end up performing. Somebody go to Dennis and Mark and then me. And folks, just let me know if you would like to...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's no question, this is an impressive report presented to us and the scope that you looked into. And it does make sense. We need to know what we need to know before we start building. I get that part. And I, the notion of community building, of working with what we have, and there's no doubt in my mind that a number of neighborhood-related childcare areas are the focus of that neighborhood. It was for my boys. And I agree on that, you build on strength. But here's my, I have a few questions. This seminar said that just about all the four-year-olds have access or are in a program. At least I thought that. I suspect they're not full-day programs. And I guess that's my number-one question. There's, this is news to me, I'll be honest with you. Because we all receive letters from groups saying that only 40% of kids are in, I guess it's the public facilities. And they asked all of us early on to expand that number. And I'm all for doing this right and all that. I guess what I feel is missing is, where are we on three-year-olds, four-year-olds, two-year-olds? And I heard none of that. And maybe that's a different study, I get that. You could say that. Or maybe that's what's going to be studied. But my understanding was that we do need to expand. And we do need to upgrade existing facilities, even private ones. And I kind of didn't hear anything that directly approached that other than we're going to study that.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of answers. First, I think what you hear, most of the children, four-year-olds, are actually served in full-day programs. The ones who are not in full-day programs actually are mostly in school department programs. So the difference here is largely a cost issue. If you are in a school department program, then you are not paying for the program. If you are in a city or a community program, you are paying. The city and community programs and the family childcare programs are for the most part full-day, full-year programs versus the school department. So I think that the issue around affordability, the issue around full day, is a live issue. But the research that we did when we began, and I think presented to the city council and I think the school committee back before we started, was demonstrating that of the around 900 four-year-olds that the Community Development Department estimates are in the city, we were able to locate where. I think 790 of them were currently in programs. And we didn't look at the junior kindergartens of the private schools in Cambridge. We didn't look at the childcare programs in cities other than Cambridge, where Cambridge parents who work in another community take their children and have them in onsite care. So the actual numbers of four-year-olds who are not currently being served is, I believe, fewer than the 100 we didn't identify. But the second question that you were asking about where all of the two-year-olds and three-year-olds, we don't currently have that data. And ultimately, as we figure out, based on the work that we do in the pilot and what the servicing, we're going to need to know more about where children are and we're going to need to look more at before.
Thank you, that's helpful. I don't think there's any doubt that, at least in my mind, that we're going to do some construction along the way. And I grant that we need to know the information before we even think of that. And I'm hoping that the comprehensive plan helps us with logical locations. I mean, three years out, the timing is identical in your first three-year plan. And I'm assuming, although there are no reports called out, it's sort of tasks that will be accomplished. I'm assuming there'll be updates periodically, maybe it's yearly or whatever makes the most sense. And that during that time, when we do learn that a certain percentage of three-year-olds and two-year-olds, one-year-olds are not getting what we know they need, that we will begin to strategize how we can possibly achieve that. Now, that is true.
So, I mean, absolutely, this is not the end of this conversation. It's actually the beginning. And I would say that when we hire a director and a team meets, so I think it's great that the superintendent, his team, want to join us. And I think this is going to be effective if, you know, we're working together. And we would report periodically back. That can be through a council committee or convening off a report on each end to the school committee and the city council. And as we look at facilities today, we look at opportunities to expand. And as we build our capital budget, of course, someone like Lisa or Louis will be working directly with the school to be able to assess where it's going to get. If, like you mentioned, even private facilities need to be upgraded. So that's a problem for a city government. However, I would think that having contracts for services maybe with some of those providers for other services may aid them in their budgets and then may actually, you know, help them in certain ways, is I think a mitigation factor.
This obviously may be the easiest subject to talk about in these chambers because everybody here wants a good system. So don't hold back on finances.
No, I think you already, I mean, you came right out of the box. So I'll...
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Mark?
Thank you. When I, when I looked at this document on Friday, I have to be careful to...
When I looked at this document on Friday, I have to be careful to get the goofy smile off my face, because it's been a long time, a long time coming. And not just, not the report itself, but, you know, really talking about it, moving towards a systemic approach to early childhood education. And we had, when I first got on the school committee, I talked about it. We have amazing, amazing people in our early childhood programs, you know, Jesse and Leanne and Lynn Hall when she was working. And I would say that we had these incredible, our early childhood programs were amazing, but they were really amazing because of the people that were working in them. The system itself, in my eyes, didn't support them enough. And I always worry that what happens when they start to retire, you know? And if we don't really create a systemic way to support early childhood education, what's going to happen if education people aren't there anymore? And here we are, you know, yet we're getting to that point. So I beside myself with excitement about this. Can you tell? So I just, I think it's great. I think the, you know, the approach, this is always the most difficult thing in education because, and it sort of gets to something the superintendent was, you know, talking about earlier about urgency versus getting it right, you know? And in education, how do you say to a parent, oh, this is going to be a three- or a five-year plan, and then it's going to be great? Well, your kid, you know, your four-year-old will be dead by nine, you know? So there's always this rub between wanting to get something done really quickly and just implementing it and, you know, versus maybe taking the time that you need to take to get it right. And I think that's always, that's always a difficult thing. So I guess my first question, you know, we have this three-year process. Give me just, you know, we've got all the boxes with the X's and the O's. Give me a picture of, I'm talking to a parent on the street tomorrow about this. You know, where do we hope to be at the end of those three years? And then what's, when are we going to get to the point where every kid in Cambridge has access to a high-quality, affordable, early childhood education? What is beyond this? And where do we hope to be at the end of these three years?
I think there was a vote taken when they asked me that question. Okay. So I think, you know, hiring the staff and getting started should be in the first six months. I think, you know, really spending a year to determine what the appropriate resources are, one of the first things, obviously, the whole mission of deciding, you know, what comes first. I think the information piece, as we found out in this, was really lacking. New residents, even residents who've been here a long time, don't know where to go for the information. Is it aligned? Am I going to make a decision that says, if I take my child and put it in this neighborhood daycare that I'm very comfortable with, people I know, people I respect and enjoy and I trust with my kids? Are they going to be in any way disadvantaged if sitting in schools and going to spend all this money to really gear up around early childhood education? We want that answered. We know they're not. So whatever it takes for us to determine the quality across the board initially, step by step, is where we're going to go. This is not going to be something where in three years we will have the instant solution. But I will tell you, every year that we move forward, I will take the Center for Families that started off with a lot of people going, thumbs up, what is this? This is not necessary. This is duplication. And every meeting I go to, I hear the advantages of the Center for Families, how it has grown, how people use it, how people rely on it. Same thing with Baby U. We started off with a small group, having to pull people now, and it's like, people want to get in, people want to join. Man, that's what I think you're going to get in the city. That's the commitment. I'm not going to sit here and tell you, on this day, we'll open the door and all magic will occur. But I think, I stop saying that. I know we will incrementally grow this program to success. And you have the advantage to be able to say, every budget cycle, every time we all get together, where are we in early childhood? And we should be prepared to give you an updated report, whether that's quarterly, twice a year, whatever you want, even if it's every other week, we will be able to say, here's the progress towards these goals. And I think it's great. They're the goals, they're the objectives. You know, when we hire somebody, they're going to develop a plan. And that plan will be presented to all of you, so we will understand. So what are the time dates that we start achieving these goals and the objectives?
And, you know, I think the information piece is key. I'm constantly attacking people on the street that I see with little babies and saying, you know, when your child turns one, make sure you get them on the waiting list for the preschool programs, because, you know, the waiting list is so long. And these are people that, you know, how would you know that? Right? How would you know that if someone didn't stop you and tell you that, you know, you can't wait until two and a half years old, you know, to get on that list? So I think, you know, getting the information out to people. And this was one of the things when we, when Councilor Colonel Representative Decker and I, who were chaired the Liberty Commission a few years back, you know, the other part that was difficult is, it's sort of easy to identify and work with the children and the families who are in programs already, whether they're daycare programs, private programs, or city programs. It's, you know, how do you reach out to, you know, that family where that eight-month-old or nine-month-old is home with grandma or aunt or somebody, and make sure that they're getting the support and the training that they need also? If the decision for that family, for whatever reason, is not to put that child in the program, are we also supporting those kids that are at home? Because those are, in many ways, those are the ones I worry about most, because our programs, yes, quality is different, and we have to make sure we're supporting them. But for the most part, all the regulations, all the standards that are coming out, providers out, programs are really, you know, are pretty good compared to where they were. But how are you reaching out to those families that are providing their own, you know, family daycare?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I think actually that's why the focus on home visiting is so big here, because, and on the family support programs, because I think that you're absolutely right. We want to make sure that for whatever choices parents are making, families are making, that there actually are opportunities for us to figure out, how are we interacting with that family in a way that's useful to that family? And between the library, the agenda for children literacy, the Center for Families, we have the opportunity to do that kind of work, and we need to make sure that we're reaching all of the families.
To, if I remember the task force, if you'd like to add the two sets on anything, please feel free to do that, if you think that we are not, you know, giving the full story, the appropriate story. I want people to feel free to just come to the microphone, move the task force and speak.
Just two things, Mr. Mayor. The first is, you know, we talk about quality. I guess I want to, how are we going to define that? I mean, I worry about, I worry about the pushing down of rigor and standards and, you know, I mean, you've got, you know, I mean, my five-year-old twins are getting assessed like crazy already in kindergarten, and I just kind of want them to eglute them every once in a while and play. And I just want to make sure that, you know, when we talk about quality and we define quality, that we're not losing sight of, you know, all the other things that come with the socialization, the social-emotional health, the play, you know, the fun. And it's not just about, you know, we got to make sure that, you know, three-year-olds are passed through some facility assessment, you know? And that becomes the focus. So how are we going to make sure that we're really, we're not sort of falling into that trap, I guess?
And there are certainly people here, Leanne, Jesse, and others, who are really expert, especially around looking at QRIS and our systems, around early childhood theater, that really do talk about the whole child. You know, it's about physical development, it's about social-emotional development, intellectual development, cognitive development. I mean, we are actually, Jesse's convening a group of kindergarten teachers tomorrow and principals to really look at this issue in our kindergarten programs as well, because there are new standards from the state right now around what is a quality kindergarten. So I think that the whole issue of quality around our early childhood programs, our kindergarten programs, is something that we, that'll be the first discussion that we have. What are, you know, in addition to, you know, we're working on third-grade reading, but really, what are the indicators of success? What do we value as high quality? And how do we know? Because it's one thing to say we're going to improve quality in programs, but we need to be clear what that looks like. Where is play? And how is literacy embedded in play? And those are the conversations that we'll be having. And we're actually going to be doing that work, so that when we do the pilot program, the quality indicators will be very clear and it will be very transparent to everybody, not only in the pilot, but in the community, that this is what we, as the Cambridge community, consider high-quality programs. So it's a great question, and it is the question that's in the Johnson Committee right now.
And lastly, Councilor Colonel brought up the citywide plan, and, you know, that plan looks a lot on its development, buildings and infrastructure and the environment and all kinds of, you know, sort of, it's not so much about programming. And I wonder about, and I'm not saying we need another sort of massive plan, but, you know, when Councilor Simmons and I were chairing the Income and Security Commission, you know, we looked at issues of poverty and hunger and homelessness and housing. So where do we tie all this stuff together in some sort of comprehensive plan of services for families across the city? So we, you know, we have, so we're going to do, you know, we're going to do this around early childhood education, and that's, and that's great, and we'll expand programming, and the programming will improve and all that. But we're also not tying that into making sure our families are, our kids have enough food on the table when they go home, and that they have a safe place and a clean place to live, and that their family is not, you know, struggling to keep the electricity on. You know, if we don't tie all of that stuff together, you know, we're, you know, as the police commissioner has said a few times, we're a bunch of dots among the lines. And so I think something to think about as we move forward is, you know, some type of human services master plan or citywide plan or something that, you know, that really looks at where we can really have a strategic plan for how are we really going to have a safety net for families? And in that, it's also not just, you know, we talk a lot in here about how Cambridge is more and more becoming a barbell of families that have, you know, a fair amount of money and families that don't. And a lot of the families that we're losing in Cambridge are those families that earn too much money to get support services, or not enough money to actually afford to live here. And so as we look at affordability, it's, we certainly have to ensure that we're looking at, you know, lower-income families and making sure we're providing for them. And we also, we have a lot of families that, you know, they're paying 30% of their, you know, their income for preschool, and that keeps them from being able to provide other things for their kids. And it means for many of those families, they go out of Cambridge because they have to find cheaper places to live because preschool and daycare is so expensive. So it's really, it's a pretty comprehensive problem. So I just want to make sure that we're, we have to tie all this stuff together at some point, because we can't just be doing one piece of this without doing the other. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Through you, to Councilor Govern, let me just say that two things about that. I think the citywide planning process absolutely is inclusive of the kind of human service planning you're talking about. The needs assessment, which is being done right now in order to support the goal-setting of the council around the community benefit funding, is definitely a piece of that. I met with the consultants for the citywide planning process last week to talk about the Income and Security Task Force, to talk about homelessness, to talk about the early childhood task force. So they are fully aware of all of the aspects of the plan. And indeed, I think it was certainly the design of the city manager and others, that this is a plan not just about infrastructure related, that this really is a plan that is broadly about what kind of community we want to be, and that piece of what kind of community we want to be is very much all about this.
Thank you. Denise?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm talking between, I'm listening, picking up where you left off. It's very important. First, I really, time is short. I really would love to have just a conversation for the school committee and city council for that important. We may not have time for that. We might have to, you might have to take us out to dinner for that. But it really, I feel like we're just getting off the top of this and not getting, really getting an opportunity to talk amongst ourselves when we really think about that. So I want to start where you left off, because I thought about that. It was how do we put, how do we have one conversation where all these pieces come together? Because we often, too often, have these conversations out of context. So we look at education, then we'll look at housing, and then we'll look at something else. We never had that sort of comprehensive conversation about we put the child and the family in the center and said, how is housing, education, employment, health, social activities out of school time, within, how does that impact? That is, to me, looking at the whole child, the whole family, looking from that perspective, as opposed to having these wonderful conversations, but we never have them about everything all at the same time, and so, you know, maybe several times. That means that I do appreciate the fact that we can have this conversation. In many cities and towns, if you go to NLC or MAS or NSBA, you sit back and say, wow, I'm glad we live where we live, because we have so much and we can do so much. So that's, so that's the good news. The important part of that going forward is to make sure that we get this done. So, Mr. Rossi, you said, and I still don't, I don't understand the pilot program at all, but that aside, you said, at some point, we will get to a building. And I guess I would have to say, and I think Mark would agree with me, I think the building, I think it's what inhibits our ability to work more effectively together is that we're not in the same building. If I, as a parent, that parent you're pulling off the street, I probably going to see that someday, but that parent you're pulling off the street, you could say, just go to 795 Mass Avenue, and it's all there. So I, the parent, first of all, know, have one place to go, it's multilabel, there's someone that looks like me in the building, and as changes in other programs change around me, I know that because we're all in the same place. So we have three more schools coming online. I think it's important to have that conversation about, is there a way to put all the early childhood stuff all in the same place? And we've been saying this for a time immemorial. So again, I appreciate putting money, and I want someone to talk to me about the budget, but I'm going to take more than my best year of time where the money is going through the budget process. But for me, if people are fragmented, they're all over working in, you used another word, maybe we're talking about the same thing. What I heard was, you said, people doing their own thing, and I took it as people working in their own thing, in their own place, in their silos, and they're not getting together as often as they should or could. And so that we lose our parents, or we lose people, because they don't know where to go. If you have to go here to register your child, here to do childcare, and here for something else. I think it's really difficult for parents to get around and do that. So I wanted to say that. The second thing that came to mind, and we talked about this before we launched this process, was the impact that our early childhood efforts have on the independent preschools, Head Start, church-based programs. You said, we don't know how to count all the four-year-olds, because they're not all in city programs, because they are in some of these programs. I had worked in Chelsea, but my child goes to a church-based program. And I just said to Ms. McDonald, what happened to the Childcare Resource Center? Because there was a time, that was a place where independent programs or independent providers could go and get support and training. And I don't know if that's gone the way of the dodo, and then something else is taking its place, but that was an important connector for particularly childcare, home-based childcare programs. And so if we're going to be effective, we can't leave the home-based childcare programs. And so how do they, I wasn't sure that they were engaged in this. And what's the impact on the, as we go forward with this plan, what's the impact on the independent preschool and home-based programs?
So what you just stated is really the essence of this plan, which is not to destroy any one program by just saying it all puts into one. We want to strengthen those programs across the board. So we need to assess what each different situation and program, or categories of program, what their needs are, and build a program that meets those needs. So everybody gets trained, everybody gets the additional So everybody gets trained, everybody gets the additional resources to come to the classroom to assist. Everybody is really gonna have their children, no matter what program you're in, in this city, start off equally and move together equally. So I think that's what I learned. What I learned from this task force was, no, 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 don't think that the city, the city is the answer to everything. It's not. It's great that you strengthen the city programs and make it as reasonable as you can for people, but we have other programs that we love and cherish and want to grow too. So this task force, very much early on decided it was gonna move forward that way and that anything done here is across the board in the city. So I, I feel really good about that. And that's why, when you hear me say, this thing has to move, I think, in a little bit slowed-down version to be able to achieve that, that's what's important. Many of these opportunities that families use for either the early learning or daycare may not have all the resources that they city has. So we need to figure that out. You know, where do we buy slots? Where do we increase scholarships? Where can we provide education equally? So if you want to certify your program, you're gonna come here and you're gonna go through this learning and this education, we're gonna assist you that way. Can we develop the right set of resources available to not only the city and schools, but also to the outside groups to make sure that they have the assistance in dealing with issues of disabilities or emotional issues or language barriers, et cetera, et cetera?
But the learning also has to be, or the information exchange has to be two ways. When I think about a parent, I know a parent, she's, she has a great job, she has it well educated and she loves home-based childcare. And so, and she know, and that childcare provider who's been doing it for a decade really knows how to reach parents in the way she always has, a waiting list. You can't get, you know, you're thinking about having a child, you have to say, okay, I'm thinking about having a child, let me go talk to her right now so she'll save the space. And, and so how do we have a sort of, I would say, a two-way way of getting, how do, how do you get these parents and how do you keep them in? And what's good ways for us, this goes to my next point around cultural competency, how do we reach these parents? Because one thing I know, everyone's heard me talk about that, Austin, is authentic family involvement. And, and we have to be a little bit better at coordinating our, to our family outreach, which I think is all over the place. And so I don't know how we quantify or qualify how well we're doing it because it's so disparate. And the other part is cultural competence competency. As you have it, is, when I look at your summer goals, objectives, strategy, implementation timeline, which is on 26, for me, cultural competency should be a goal and not a guiding principle. I think it should be the thread that goes through everything. And if you're going to have a panel that reaches out to folks that you don't normally reach out to and you haven't really worked at reaching out to them in a real way, then, you know, I always say, if you always do what you always did, you always get what you always got. And, and that's what I think happens with us. And I really appreciate, you know, that we reached out to some of our national models, the Linda West Warner and David Jacobson, but we also have to learn it and know it ourselves and do it. So what I see is we have all these pockets of community engagement all over the place. And then we have this interesting way of doing cultural competency, but that's the conversation for another day. It's, it's not, we don't have it in our belly, it's not a part of our DNA yet. And that's something that we really have to work at. I think we made lots of attempts at it, but we really haven't, it's not a part of our DNA. And so that's something that I'm going to be looking at. And then let's run through the rest of this and I don't know if we're gonna be able to be more conversant about this, Mr. Mayor, than I really would look if time will allow. I'm really, I believe in making a nice dinner meeting where we sit down and just kind of talk would be great.
We should be able to.
Yeah, because I don't like to cook, you know? I cook for this.
Oh, that's awesome.
Right, usually, you know, pajamas, the whole other thing. So family, so bench, my fifth point is benchmarks and evaluation. I don't know if that is, you had, what's the word, you said program quality? Is that benchmarks and evaluation? How do we know we're there?
Product of helping the whole quality and social plan, she's asked to know if we have any specific benchmarks and specific outcomes. And we.
And for me, that's important. I want, before you launch it, I want that in place because I don't want us to roll down the road and then we stop and say, oh, and let's see how we're doing. I want us to see, I wanted to put it out there, this is our goals, this is where we're trying to go and that's it. But you have to be able to evaluate, you need to be able to quantify, it needs to be power within touch it, for me. And for, you know, at the end of the day, the school committee and city council are policymakers. We live, we have to share responsibility to see that our money is being spent in a way that's making a difference and we can only do that if there's some quality control.
So that's really an excellent point that.
Speaking to you, Mike, a little bit.
Oh, sure. What we have before you is, our charge was to create a set of recommendations and we, but we knew that we need to have a set of benchmarks to know whether this plan is being implemented, whether we're seeing the early evidence of change that's gonna lead to our midterm outcomes that's gonna lead to our long-term outcomes. And so we very deliberately structured these recommendations in plan-like form, right? Just as you said, with the objectives and our strategies and our actions. And so I would say what we have in our recommendations is maybe 75% of a plan. And what that missing 25% is, is the benchmarks, just like you're asking for. And that comes, that comes in year one, is to set up benchmarks around which we are going to hold ourselves accountable.
And I respectfully ask my colleagues, we feel, you know, that 25% should be there before we start running down, rolling down the road. That's just my, my feeling. Thank you. Family involvement, I think I spoke to, to that a little bit. I, I feel like our family involvement slash community involvement is very fragmented, even when we beat our budget vote. I, we talk about community involvement and I can look at twelve places to find it and I really want it in one place. I want to be able to look and say, our family involvement is what we do, this is who does this. This is how effective it is, this is how many languages it's in, this is how often we evaluate it. We have to be better at looking at how do we engage our families so that we know. I'm at Z Robyn here, I, I know the work that she did knocking on every door for every parent and her numbers on family involvement went up because she knocked on the door. I don't know if it was because she knocked on the door and people were saying, I better go to school because she knocked on the door and she might come back and come and get me. You know, whatever it is, that part has to be, you know, community involvement is not easy. It is very, very hard work. But once you get the ball rolling with it and people see it as an expectation and they really feel that you want them there, then they will come on their own and they will tell others to come. So I, I, I really want to see us in general, just not in this regard, but overall, see that the family involvement gets as strong as possible. My question is, so where's Baby U fit in all of this? I don't see it mentioned. And where are the family liaisons? We talk about family involvement. So first, is Baby U a part of this and it's just not written out? Because we, we've spent a lot of money and a lot of good things are going on with it, but I don't see it.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, both Baby U and the Center for Families were called out in here as the family support programs that we were looking to actually expand through this project. So they definitely are a part of this.
Sure, okay. So they'll continue to be supported. And then it's, it's always great sitting down and talking with my colleagues and they'll say, our school committee, we know we're doing enough, we have to figure out how to do it more often. I just think we are far more effective when we talk more often. And then just lastly, let's look for the budget. Can you build a budget a few minutes? Because I just probably want you to explain to me. So with the budget, we're just on 12 of the slides. It says affordability, what's that mean? And then we want $50,000 for now and $725 in year two, but I don't know why I joke so much. Program quality, family engagement, we're not gonna use, we're not gonna engage any families in 2016, so that's why there's no money in it. Can someone tease that out for a little, a little bit more? Okay, let me, what I asked was, there are broad categories. It says total, goal one, affordability, $50,000 for what? Goal two, program quality, $90,000. What is that for? Family involvement, we're not spending any money on that in 2016? So that's why, can you tease that out a little bit more?
I can. I have that, I was scrambling to find a piece of paper, but I had, had actually broadened and talked about that. So in, in really FY16, we really consider that to be a planning period and for year one to truly start on July 1 of 2016, so FY17. So really talking about some of the things that you mentioned just a few minutes ago about setting the benchmarks and, and the, and really sort of doing the rest of the 25% of the strategic plan, we want to begin launching that in what we're calling the planning period between January and June. And that's gonna.
Of 2016?
Of 2016, right, of the remainder of this fiscal year where the city manager's going to ask for $200,000 approximately to sort of launch this, to have us hire, make the hires that we want to make and to begin some of this work and set up the governance. And so that's really the money that we're talking about in 2016, the remainder of the second half of this fiscal year is the proportion of the salary for the early childhood director and the program quality specialist, as well as some work that we're going to do on beginning to develop the professional development plan so that it can be implemented in the following fiscal year. And just developing a transition plan and so, and developing the governance structure. So really, this first six months or the final six months of this fiscal year is really a planning period. So in the following year, in what we're really considering to be year one fiscal 2017, we have funding in of $725,000 in goal one. And that includes a, a study and alignment of home visiting. So about $100,000 to, to both do a needs assessment and begin the work of aligning and improving the home visiting programs. About $75,000 to really start drilling down and understanding affordability issues and access issues around the things that Mr. Governe was talking about. And then about $100,000 in that is just to increase scholarship subsidies to high-quality programs directly, scholarships. About $100,000 really to begin to develop and begin the starting implementation, I guess the feasibility of the JK and kindergarten program, how difficult will it be for the school department to actually guarantee that any child is in the JK, comes in as a JK, is in a separate JK program? That can have a lot of ramifications on control choice, on space, all of those issues. We have about $300,000 in developing and implementing year one of the pilot. And about $50,000 in funding a position and other support for Find It Cambridge. And that's all in goal one, that's at $725. So there's actually quite a, quite a few things going on next year in, in goal one, et cetera. So, you know, there are, and so then we also have to understand how much can we actually do, right, in year one? And so we're trying to be conservative in, in promises that we're making in our, in promises.
Let me just say, just as I can hear you here saying this, I'm better if I see it.
Okay.
So it'd be helpful if the entire council could, could see it.
Right.
Because I know there's other stuff I want to speak. So the two things I'm gonna put on the table, we get to it finally, we don't get it writing, is I want to know, what, what is the cultural competency going to look like? You have it in here, I want to see what it looks like. I want to see what the family involvement looks like. And I wanted to understand why you were separating the JK, the junior K's from the K. We don't have that. There's other things that want to speak. I'll relink the floor, but I'd be interested in knowing some of the thinking about that. And we talked about the pilot, but I have to see it. So I would like to see that as well. Thank you.
Okay. And I'm, I'm just going to do a little time check because I have six folks that want to speak. We have 15 minutes. So we'll, these are two-hour meetings, but we're gonna try to go a little bit longer. But we're, I'm gonna ask people to be concise with their comments.
Right. I, I think this is great. This is a great day in Cambridge. We probably should be breaking open bottles of champagne. This is the fulfillment of the hopes and dreams of so many people in Cambridge. And so I appreciate the efforts. And I did a 10-on-1 session and saw the enthusiasm and the engagement of all the committee members. So thank you for that. So let me get to my questions so I can do what the mayor suggests. One issue of quality daycare is salaries that we pay to people that work. So it's a huge issue and I've read it in many reports. Can you tell me, I know that, you know, I know the school department pays decent salaries, but how are we gonna have all of those other daycare providers pay the salaries that you need so that we can begin to create the quality that we need to create? Is there a plan for that? It's a big question, actually.
I would say that the, there isn't a plan at the moment for how we would affect the change of the salary scale for programs across the city. But clearly, having a high-quality staff and paying well is one of the hallmarks of our.
I know that Boston is lucky enough to have a foundation and actually subsidize the salaries for daycare for, for these facilities in Boston, which is, I think, one of the.
So that's a great point because I think if you establish a quality program that people have a lot of confidence in, you may attract a foundation.
Well, that's, that's good.
I think that's, you know, we're trying to put it on the record there.
Okay.
A really good program. This is in the beginning stages, but I think that's a goal.
And one thing that we're seeing at the state level right now, that for the first time, we're beginning to attach money to quality ratings or RIS. So we're wanting to see how that plays out and how that was.
Second question is, so I've read a lot of reports that, that early childhood programs actually lose the gains after a certain amount of years. What's, what's different about what we're gonna approach, what's gonna keep those gains going?
I think that, I think the short answer to that question is if you continue the work from kindergarten on. The national research suggests that the problem is if you don't, that you can do things early on, but then if the high-quality service, Jesse is nodding over there, so I'm sure that this is right, that the issue is, do you continue the high-quality programming? And so it's the work that we do before the children start in the Cambridge public schools and then the Cambridge public schools continuing that work.
Okay, that's great. And then I have my own, I, you know, what I would toss in there is my own idea is, you know, since the Cambridge public schools, since we offer three immersion programs, I'd really love to see some daycare opportunities that are done in different languages so that we can, you know, it would benefit the Cambridge public schools. But I think to live in a global economy, I think that having different language AKs is really, I think, critical to me and for a global community like Cambridge. I think that's, should be considered a must. The other thing is, I know that, and I'm glad you raised issues on the school department because programs like our special start in different schools, you know, people get comfortable in those schools, but yet they can't stay in those schools. And so I, I think that that's an area that we have to deal with as a school department and creating our own building facility that, you know, as, as people have mentioned, is a great thing. And I would say.
So we're giving extra points.
I don't know, I'm, 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 I'm a big believer in, I, I, well, just, just two more points and that is, who's gonna actually write the strategic plan? I mean, is that? Is it, is it gonna be a committee? Is it gonna be a staff? We're just curious.
So we eliminated the staff. I think we, we're trying to keep the input from both the schools and the city. And, you know, this is something that I share. It isn't gonna be just written and then you'll see it, you know? We will try and share this so that people can understand what it is. And hopefully, you know, get a agreement.
So this committee is being disbanded now, so, so they're not, they're not continuing in their role to help write a strategic plan, I guess?
I mean, I'm sure there are many people.
Okay.
I mean, there are probably some feel that their work is done and maybe there are others just by virtue of their positions that they hold. others, just by virtue of their positions that they hold, who want to continue, I hope that they will continue, because it's really a good, smart committee.
You could have said that that responsibility fell to the senior member of the school.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm actually, I'm gonna conclude with that, okay? I mean, I have a lot of other questions, but I, I got, they've done a great, great job, everybody, and, uh, thank you very much, and this is, as I said, it's a great day, and thank you for all your efforts.
Uh, yeah.
Thanks. Um, the good news is, so many people have asked all the questions I had from Dennis, Mark, Denise, Fred, um, so I'll just ditto, ditto all of the concerns and issues, but also kudos that they raised. This seems like a long time coming, right? We did start talking about this a long time ago, thirty years ago, I was doing research on working family issues and childcare, and in a way, as a country, we haven't actually moved a lot further along than when I did this for Catalyst more than thirty years ago. And yet, in many other ways, once we push this forward, this did come pretty quickly, so I want to recognize that, that even though it took a long time, I think, to establish the task force, for some of us, it felt like, oh my gosh, this was five years ago, we had a meeting on the Early Childhood Task Force, and then two years ago, or three years ago, we had a roundtable in here, but once it got started, I think this is a pretty fast timeline, so I want to keep the pressure on and congratulate the urgency that we feel here, because I think if we stayed in this timeline within a few years, we will have a really robust system that hopefully will become one of these models in some other cities, um, pamphlet that they're doing on early education. Part of what's also happened in the last few years is truly an explosive growth in brain research. So we know a lot more about particularly those critical years than I think it was five or six years ago that we were all, uh, talked about when Leanne talked about the, the million words extra that a standard three-year-old who comes from a middle-class family hurt by the time of age three, that stuns you when you realize the impact on that child's readiness for kindergarten. But moving backwards, I've been to a number of conferences, and I'm sure my colleagues have too, where the, the brain research is now on the zero to one and zero to two, and the critically important role that those years have, and for any family in crisis, we know from a lot of work in this city on trauma, and families in, in trauma, that that's just as critically important. So my question related to what all of us have said, which is, this sounds great, that the quality is gonna be key, that will trump everything, we need to make sure that we move forward with a quality system, do we have any sense of how we would define that, and how do we ensure that we're building on the best practice nationwide for defining that critical quality, to make sure that whatever we're bringing, whether it's family daycare, whether it's a church-based, whether it's a, um, city-based program, to ensure that we're, we are building on the most recent work that defines quality?
Officer, could you please say that? We have been, um, looking at a lot of the work that has been coming out of the National Build Network, which is that, you know, really focuses on building a system of high-quality. PRIS is definitely the framework, and it's, you know, it is the model that is being, um, used in about ninety, ninety-four percent of, of states currently, so we are really focusing a lot of our attention on that, and also the equity and the cultural competence lens and the research that has come out of that has really been very useful and informing, you know, what that should look like going forward as well.
Um, and I'm sure we can all hear more about that. One more, um, point. I like the mixed governance, it's really critically important in the community also to be able to move forward fast, that we don't just recreate an entire new system run only by certain, um, by our own buildings, and yet we want to build on, on what we have. Moving forward with this, uh, mixed delivery model, um, how do we make sure that families, um, I don't know, I guess tying it all together with the digital divide, with, with so many families from different languages, Fred talked about how, you know, providing services in different languages, and we have a lot of our families already in our, um, schools in our city who don't have access to English, who don't have access to digital divide. If we, are we just assuming that'll get taken care of in the first year, that we, you know, it, it's fine if Cambridge Find It, I love it, but obviously we have families who may not even know that that...
I would say that, um, in large measure, the networks we already have and focused on that, I know when, um, Councilor Simmons was speaking before, um, the community engagement team and the outreach workers through the community engagement team, who now are doing a lot, walk through the schools as well as the, um, city, are a critical piece of this, and embedded in this is a little more funding to be able to support some of their work. The Center for Families, right now, um, has staff who, um, speak many different languages, and the outreach that we do throughout the, um, housing developments in the city is done by multilingual, um, teams, um, and I think that we're very clear that the, um, focus of who we most need to reach are the families who on their own aren't going to find us.
Okay. And I, for one, also am thrilled, it's a joint effort, but I don't, wouldn't mind the city taking the lead, building on what Mr. McGovern said, that we do schools, we do assessments, we do testing, we want to make sure that the system that's built is focused on social-emotional learning, play, there's some level which I really hope that it continues to be joined with, maybe even the city taking lead, because early education experts should be ahead of this as opposed to it being folded into our, if that, if that makes sense. I, I almost would worry that it would naturally come into a system where there's a lot of state and national mandates focused on testing, whereas what we really want to do is provide this opportunity for children to bridge the opportunity gap from day one to ensure that they are ready later on for school, so.
I hope we are successful, we use this model because we want the expertise that is best in certain areas to be the lead, so we're not having, you know, schools to do things that they shouldn't do or, or can't do in, you know, like virtual session, and that's why I think we have this joint effort.
I would just follow up and add that there, you know, one of the reasons we refer to this as a birth through third grade or prenatal through third grade, is that there, nationally, there is a big divide between school systems and early childcare, and we found that same divide here in Cambridge, and I would say the loudest message we got from our community-based providers is the extent to which they feel that they're not part of the system, and that they want to be collaborating from the system. So while it's very important that this be, um, whole child and developmentally appropriate zero to five, it's also really critical that it be whole child and developmentally appropriate K to three. And one of the things we see in birth to third efforts is not, is not so much push-down, which is your very legitimate concern, here's an opportunity for push-up, and, and we can have a conversation about how in Boston, how in New Jersey, how in Oregon, how around the country we're seeing as much push-up as push-down.
Uh, social-emotional K through twelve, probably, maybe even through sixteen, whole, whole child should not just divide, thanks.
Thank you. Fran and then Dennis, please.
Uh, Ms. David, thank you very much. Um, I just want to reiterate what the people have said, just how exciting this is today to be having this conversation, especially as a joint conversation with the city council and school committee, I think that it is, uh, we talk about silos and we need to break them down, I think this is a perfect example of how we are trying to break down the silos that I think that have inhibited the progress of the city for so long. Um, a couple of issues that I just want to raise, and we don't have answers today, that's fine, just want to throw them out there, and I think to first address the, that David Jacobson said, that's for prenatal through grade three. So we talk a lot about being access, having access to families once they're in the school system, but for me, the biggest issue or critical is how do we recruit prior to that? How do we tap the families? For a mother who is pregnant, make sure she has the right prenatal care, how do we bring those families into the system once that baby is born to make sure that they are being recruited for home visits, quality play, nutrition, health in the home, all those kinds of services, how do we tap those families? So it's, for me, it's a recruitment and retention issue, and it isn't, it shouldn't just stop at, you know, grade three, if, when a child is three years old, how do we sustain that? And one of the things that's very clear through the literature is that it isn't just, you know, compartmentalized, you get a child to grade three and they're reading proficiently, but how do we sustain? How do we align? How do we sustain that support so a child can graduate successfully from our high school? So that to me is a critical piece, that, that alignment, and again, looking at how we, um, another piece along that, um, someone had mentioned DAU, and I have been to their graduation, and someone made a comment, which was very poignant, I thought, that they said, we provide these services, and then the students get a little bit older, the family grows, these families leave Cambridge. So we're doing a lot of front-end investment, we know families move because they can afford to stay here. So, you know, it doesn't mean that we don't invest, but I mean, I would like to throw up that we perhaps consider some sort of a regional support system. There's a lot of fluidity between Somerville, there's a lot of fluidity, families moving out of Cambridge, other places, how do we support the students? How do we prepare to accept students into our system, who are coming from other systems who may not have the benefit of what we offer? How do we end that effect as soon as we do invest and then they leave and go to other districts? So I'll just throw that out there as something to consider. Um, another entity that was not raised, and I don't know what kind of role they could play, but they might be helpful, is the Cambridge Housing Authority. Again, we have so many people, the families of greatest need, our residents of our Cambridge Housing Authority, that was not mentioned in this presentation, so how do we access those families? How do we direct services there, on-site, to those housing developments and to those families? So that's an area I think I'd like to see us work a little bit. And when we talk about community engagement, I think that, um, Councilor Simmons raised this, you know, it's funny to read community engagement, because everything we have says in community engagement, we probably have a laundry list of community engagement plans in the city. So again, how do we coordinate them? And how do we coordinate them so that, that whoever works with that family is almost like a case manager, so they're engaging them, and they're telling them about schools, they're telling them about the health services, they're telling about the childcare supports. So we don't have various people doing the same thing, or some of these redundancies of outreach, of coordination, so I think that that would be a tremendous opportunity to look at how do we coordinate that engagement through a one-stop service of some sort. And when we're talking about benchmarks, and I think that, uh, Councilor McGovern raises, and I think it's going to elicit attention that exists in our city, and I'd just like to put it on the table that we have, we know that these programs, we know if they're successful or not because of data that we collect. You look at longitudinal studies that tell you how long and how well students have done over the course of time, we need to collect that data to know if we are succeeding, we need to collect that data to really measure, do we have a quality program that's succeeding? At the same time, we have a district, a different sector of our district says we test too much. But we need to coordinate our data, we need to coordinate our assessments, we can't have assessment collection just for these programs and then do other assessments that are in the schools, we need to coordinate it and align it, and I think this can be a tension that we need to anticipate and help prepare our community to understand that if we want to have a quality early childhood education program, then these are the mandates that support a program that are going to achieve the outcomes that we desire for ourselves as a community. So thank you, and I think this is fabulous, thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Dennis, just device away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for you to, um, everyone at the roundtable. I first just want to applaud everyone that was involved in task force, uh, city staff, um, for this very comprehensive report, um, it's obviously a very exciting time for our city, I know that this was one of the most important posts that I took last year in the spring, uh, to form the task force, and I think everyone in there should be incredibly proud of where we're going with this. Uh, I wanted to ask a couple of questions of the representative of the family daycare providers, but I'm, for the sake of time, I'm not going to do that, but I'm curious, how many family daycare providers do we have here? Is there any at all? No? They must have gone off, okay.
We, we had three, three on the task force.
Okay, I saw there was like the Cadeja and several others. Uh, the reason why I ask is my mother's been a family daycare provider, um, for almost thirty-five years, and, uh, so I've, you know, watched her take care of the children at home, and, um, it's, uh, it's such an important part of a child's, um, early child's life, so, um, just want to make sure that as this work continues, that the family daycare providers are an integral part of how this work develops. Uh, one of the things that I wanted to really zoom in on is, you know, the success of education, uh, our public schools, and, and even this program as it continues to evolve, for me, the greatest success will be when I see a critical mass of our kids, particularly poor children, moving from poverty to the middle class, which means that, you know, our kids are being nurtured at the young age, um, they're learning, uh, they're being exposed to, um, you know, the types of careers that we have here in our city, particularly Kendall Square, they're moving on to high school, moving on to college, and coming back and getting a good job. And so for me, you know, we can, you know, focus on the social-emotional piece, we can focus on a lot of the details that we often discuss in these chambers around education, but the key really is, how do we provide, um, a young child with the opportunities to learn so that they can have access to our economy? And so as this, you know, work continues, I want us to make sure that we're really focused around economic justice piece, uh, because in the end, that's how we're gonna keep our families in Cambridge, that's how we're gonna keep families healthy and, and allow them to have, uh, what they need to, to send their own kids to college, um, as, as they get old and have, uh, their own families. Uh, so that's, you know, for me, very, very important, so, you know, as we think about the creation of these programs, you know, the math and science piece is, is critical, uh, making sure that some of these programs also emphasize the arts, uh, which, you know, I feel that we're really losing a lot of that, and as I said, it's already been mentioned by several others, you know, the languages, you know, because we do live in a global, global economy. Uh, I was curious to, to see, uh, in here, um, the best practices and what some of the programs are that we looked at across the country, I know that Mayor de Blasio in New York was based on, um, early childhood education, and so I was kind of curious how, uh, you saw their program, um, and how you see our program developing here, but we don't have a lot of time, so I, at some point, maybe offline, if you could, um, have that conversation with me, that would be great. Um, if there's anyone more questions here. Um, it was mentioned earlier that, you know, we've got to begin to look at the development of our children, um, holistically, uh, in terms of housing and food and, and transportation mobility as well as, um, education, so I, you know, I know that with several members of the city staff, we've had conversations around the idea of a complete city, uh, and what that really means, and, so I think it's, it's also important that as we look at this, this one piece, that we do, um, look at, um, the full nature of, of families and how, um, you know, their struggle, and what types of things they need to, to survive, and that includes housing, because if you worry about housing, then you're obviously not, uh, gonna be paying too much attention to, to that education piece, so, you know, as this work evolves, looking at everything, hopefully will be great, and, and again, this is a very exciting time for our city, and I'm proud that I had this opportunity to actually vote, um, to, um, have this work, obviously, thank you, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Um, Urban?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. One, two, three, four, okay. I have two, two questions, I guess, then, I'm gonna stay, stay away from some. One is, um, I'm curious about, you mentioned, Mr. Ross, the, um, the center, the, the potential for, you know, some bricks and mortar and, and, and future investment, hopefully not too far in the future, and I just was curious, you know, within the context of the task force, um, how detailed did you allow yourselves to get? And were there any, was there any sort of talk about, you know, what that could, could look like?
We, we did not come into detail of that at all. I mean, I think what we tried to do is understand what all the needs are in the community, how we fulfill all those needs, and creating a building right now, we've not seen it come to be part of the list that is required in the beginning, so I really think if we're gonna have success here, we have to build this program the right way, that's what we tried to do. Tried, I mean, I've listened to this conversation for so many years, when I think the task force tried to do, again, for all of the, you know, elected officials, is to move the needle, to create a plan, uh, which we can have, now you've all made, I think, some really good suggestions and ideas, you know, we'll take all that back, but I really want to move this plan, and then we can all together evaluate our success here or not, eventually, I mean, we're planning buildings in the future, you know, we're probably, we got our second school, and then we have a third school, and I'm sure this is gonna be a fall, um, and that, you know, that goes out away, so that doesn't happen in the next two or three years, so I think there is some opportunity, but it's probably gonna be, you know, figuring out sort of, is there a... out sort of, is there an excess building after we go through all this? Is there an availability? And, you know, I'm just guessing, is there a lone fell school that comes available in the future? I don't know. Is there a building that gets abandoned somewhere in the future, and we say, is a good place to begin to think about a center like this and what it would do? At the same time, I think we want to support, as all of you have said, all the other opportunities for early childhood learning that exist in our run through the city. But that's not really how we put that in.
And then just finally, the, the sort of, the role of the director, the early childhood director, as you envision him, again, could you comment on what that role looks like? Under which department, you know, what part of our city's operation does that have been envisioned to emerge from? I'm just wondering if, how that, if that's gone to any further depth.
Do you, Mr. Mayor, we've thought of this actually as a position to only reporting to the school department and to the human services department on the theory and working with the variety of committees that we've described in the report, with the idea that it's actually critical for this to be jointly owned, and that that will make the biggest difference.
Please. Thanks. Work on your actually, I believe, the best, not one of the best, services and also those personally, from taking advantage of any of your programs, like having people come to your house and reach your child is mind-blowing when I tell my friends about it. The fact that we have like a bookmobile running around is fantastic. I think this city has a fantastic commitment to its kids. And so I think these are all great questions in the report. And the risk of sending people in the room, frankly, I'm very frustrated, I'm very disappointed, and I'm kind of bored. Like, I want all, when we send people off, I was hoping that these questions would come back answered. And we, the council committed half a billion dollars to investing in new school infrastructure, which I wholeheartedly support, and I want to do that, but like, I want to know, like, how much is it going to cost to do early education for our kids or children? I don't want to know about, like, okay, these are the questions, these are all the questions that we're going to study, but I want the questions answered. And I also feel like, you know, I've been going to so many of these meetings, open houses for pre-K nowadays, and the teachers spend like an hour talking about the program, philosophy of education, the curriculum, and the parents are like, once to pick off, once to drop off, once to pick up, once to drop off, how much is it going to cost me? Like, parents need something. And I'm like, I have, all of my colleagues, all my friends, all my peers are leaving the city, because you can't afford to live here, and you can't afford also at the same time to send your child to daycare here. And every year, and we talk about three years, every year that this is not addressed is another year that I've seen friends leave, is another year that we're losing an entire cohort of children. And I'm so frustrated, because I know that we are doing so many great things, like, so we talk about the bookmobile, we talk about like early literacy, we talk about baby university, we talk about all these things that we do well, and we want to expand them. Like, they're proven pilots, we know how to reach kids, we know what to do, let's just do it. And I don't want to talk about it. And like, we can talk about the programming and the right programming, but that's not what people need. We have people that are working two jobs, both parents working two jobs just to stay afloat. They need early childhood, and they don't need it in three years, they need it now. So I, you know, I think these are all the right questions to ask, I think we have the right team assembled, I think we have the best people in the country, I know that for a fact. I want us to just move, and I'm super, super impatient, I'm very, I'm so frustrated. This entire evening, I've been so frustrated. All my colleagues are asking great questions, they're like, those are the questions we can ask, once we have a program in place for the mother, right now, has a three-year-old at home, and she's working two jobs, her husband's working two jobs, and they need somewhere to send their kid from nine to five so that they can go work, and so their kid is getting an education that's not just on TV. And I want that like next year. So, so we have some school committee members here left, like, go talk to your superintendent, come back to me, we're in the budget process right now, the number's going to be set by the end of the year. Tell me what is it going to cost for us to have early childhood education for every single kid? And I will fight with my colleagues to do as best as I can to make sure we have them. And don't tell me it's a capacity constraint. We just approved half a billion dollars in space. So if space, I don't believe space is the issue, because I think, I know that we can fund space, because we're doing it right now. And it might be logistics, and maybe like, I don't know what, but like, it might be hiring teachers, whether or not those are on our classrooms, or whether or not those are off-site. I just want to do it. So go and figure out what the number is, come back and tell me, and I will advocate for that number, because every year that we don't do it, we're losing kids. And as the report tells, this is the most impactful way to spend our dollar, let's just do it. So that's what I have to say. I won't go wrong, because I'll just probably dig all, but I appreciate the questions, I appreciate the enthusiasm, I think we have a great team, but I'm just impatient to just get going. Thanks.
Kathleen? Richard, and then we're going to wrap up.
Mr. Chung is inviting an interesting group to come to him with a lot of requests. I think he should watch on that screen with a lot of peril, but I do appreciate his enthusiasm about getting it done. I do know, though, that when you take on something of this scale, you want to make sure that you do do it right, because trust me, as complicated as it seems, you can mess this up pretty easily, so you just got to be careful about that. I just have one particular question, and I think that it came out of something that Mr. Reverend talked about, I think, there's people around the room talking. I just wanted to get a better sense of the direction we're going in, intentionality that we're looking at this endeavor. So oftentimes, we've been talking, at least throughout the last couple of months, both members of the city council and school committee about this as being a priority. It seemed like there was consensus across the board, and now we're here tonight. I do believe that, and I know Ms. Benzam, but I do believe that there is a difference between childcare and early education. I think that there's a clear difference between that. And oftentimes, when we were in conversations, folks on the school side, it was about the end game. And the end game is making sure that kids got very early what they needed to be able to be successful students. So I respect and I understand, and I would support either approach, but I do think that we have to have a serious conversation of what quality means and what quality is, particularly as it pertains to the readiness factor. So if you look at Montgomery County, they were very clear about what they were trying to do. They wanted to have kids ready, like, you know, third grade readiness, that was their thing. And so for me, part of this is just understanding what I'm supporting. And I would support either, because I do think that they're equally important, that kids need a safe space to play, I think the affordability issue, and some of the stuff that Mr. Simmons talked about around cultural compensation are truly grail issues. But I do think if we're going to sell this large-scale new deal to the public in Cambridge, we need to define it, we need to say what it is, so that everybody understands what they are supporting, as well as making it's alignment to what we see as the goal and the end game. So that's my only sort of broad question. Now, if we're looking at early childhood as a game changer for the student achievement of all kids across the city, and helping parents understand what that means, we have to be intentional with all that upfront. And you're totally right, I wouldn't disagree that, you know, how you assess kids, how you look at the data, it's all relevant, but I don't think we should not at least define where we want kids to end up, because I do think it's different. As you, as you see, you know, in the home, we know for a fact that some of the home sort of childcare, I mean, they're not going to be as heavy on the educational piece just because they may not be trained to be. And so I think that while it's all good, I think that it's incumbent upon us to maybe think about defining what we think the end game is going to be. And I'll just say this, that I know from the people who are on this group meeting, who obviously were talking, and I don't want to say it, right, we're making sure that this is helping us with the achievement. That's one lens, not the only lens, but it's one lens that we've been consistent about as school committee members. If we're going to go a different direction, like I said, I would support this, because I think, I think the whole deal is very important, so I'm not, it's not going to sway you either way, but I do think we should define it, because one of the things we're going to have to do as the members of the school committee is think about what are these other things that we need to do that are going to influence student achievement across the board. And so that's just something I put out there, I don't want to take all the time, but as I heard the conversation, I just wasn't so sure in what the direction was going to be. And I know that there's talk about doing it in multi, sort of, layers, but what we've been talking about a lot has been around using this as another one of the tools or levers to advance student achievement and bring the whole child together, looking at the social-emotional side early, looking at issues of trauma, looking at all of these things that are very germane to what we do in schools. So that's just my question broadly, and as I want to just be clear, this is great energy, it's a great thing we're doing here, but I just want to be clear on what we're supporting so that we can sell the right thing to the folks that we've been talking to. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Do you, Mr. Mayor, if there are other people who could speak to this as well, and we'll have another opportunity to say more about it, but actually, if you look at what the standards are for, starting with family childcare providers, as well as all of the early education and care providers, the standards that those programs now need to meet, I think you would find line up fairly well with all of the domains that you would want to see for early childhood education. And I think in a certain sense, it's a false dichotomy that we're presenting here. And I think the concern, and I think our goal, isn't that there aren't appropriate standards really for all the programs you're describing, but rather that we as a system need to work with every program to make sure that the children, that those programs are needing those standards, and that collectively we're supporting it, because it should be true that a child in family childcare in Cambridge, as well as in any of the center-based programs here, should be able to enter the Cambridge Public Schools ready to succeed in kindergarten, and it doesn't depend on which space they're in, but our job is to make sure that we're providing adequate support across the board to those programs.
Right, and I would totally agree with that, I just know that some of that takes time. You know, we did this, if you think I went back, when we were talking about this in different contexts, or how long, and I just assumed time, right, when it was on a school. That takes time. The Cambridge Community Center, eight years ago, of course, Susan Richardson, Carrie Roman, they did not have a single understanding of what was needing to have a child come full circle on education, and you have to suspect. Similarly, and I'm just shooting this at it, because I know her, and other folks I know, you know, that takes time to get them to think and be trained and to understand what it is that alignment needs. So I appreciate that, but I just know that, you know, that's not going to happen overnight, and what else happens overnight? That part will take time. So I just was very interested, and I know it's McDonald's, I was going to say.
I'll just add that, I don't think the work that we were doing around social-emotional learning and the cognitive learning, it's not, it's not mutually exclusive. In other words, this work is really all about supporting children in their whole development. And so now that we have the tools to be able to do that, whether it's this new QRIS system that were, those are the quality standards, and we are now using those and expanding those and extending those into our early education, kindergarten, grade one, hopefully built up. So I don't want, I wouldn't want anybody to think that in early childhood, we have a certain set of standards that are kind of fluffy, and then we do academic when we get to kindergarten. And that is the perception, and I appreciate what people said about assessment, but that is the work ahead. How do we really make this seamless, so that it really, you know, that it is a seamless transition for kids when they come to the school, and then for us, that we take it through the elementary to the middle to the high school? And we've seen that in the other districts across the nation that have done this well. I don't want to belabor it, but it is seamless.
Last comment, and do you, Mr. Mayor, if I may. So, and blame me if this had happened, I've been at a lot of transitions over the last two months, telling people anything they want to hear, just kidding. Just kidding. But the reality of this particular issue is that I was, and this is the sort of public perception, plus what I would assume, but you can tell me if I'm right or wrong. So much of the conversation is around affordability and the places that I'm in. So I obviously, she was at the central schools, $250 a week, right? So it's $1,000 a month, more than I paid for college, right? That was years ago, almost 70 years ago, when she turned 18 Friday. My point is, that's enormous amount of money, right? I'm, you know, I'm at the state house making pennies and a dollar, right? I was under the understanding, and I could be wrong, that the affordability issue is that, you know, we're going to kind of have this kind of free, open to everybody, that sort of access piece that we're talking about. So at some point, I think we could have a conversation on what the affordability is. Is this a size scale? Is this someone waiting for an voucher to get into the program? That gave us for years the problem with working families. So, you know, you're waiting, you're waiting, you're waiting, I'm going to vouch, we're going to do this, we're going to do that, it's almost like, you know, financing a house to get your kid at the area four youth center to daycare, right? Not the daycare area four's problem, but that's just how people have to manage. This is another part of the rhythm of life for, oftentimes, poor people in every state have to balance this out, or other folks who have the means don't have to do this. So one of the serious conversations I would have at some point, doesn't have to be now, is what does affordability look like? How is this more accessible than what we have now, right? Because I think that's an important piece on the table for us now, where we're beginning this. I know the council, and I know Mr. Chung is very enthusiastic about supporting this, but those, Mr. Chung, are some of the numbers that are still outstanding. We don't know what is necessary, because we don't know what our reach is going to be. So I don't want to keep us, I know the hours late, but I do hope that at some point, maybe the mayor can figure out how we can have the flow of information and have some of these questions answered, but how do we really talk about those things? Because for the people that I believe I represent, that's a big deal. That's the, that's the biggest of the big deals. It is not just having these programs, there's a lot of programs, but it's access, it's affordability, it's about the information, and it's about how we can actually make this attractive and appealing enough, and easy enough for them to seamlessly, as Ms. Semenoff said, enjoy the fruits of these great programs we have in Cambridge. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I apologize for taking so much time.
I would just say that this is one of the moments that I'm proud to be part of Cambridge and to be where I am. And part of it is because I think that early childhood education and the people who have worked in it for years are finally getting the respect that they deserve. And it's been a long time coming. And I think also the children and the amount of learning that young children have during that zero to five is also getting the respect that it deserves. And so when, I don't have lots of critical questions. One of the things I think, though, that we need to clarify and gets thrown around a lot is the word "play," because play is actually a child's work. And it's not, so if we can help children in have play be fun, because learning is fun, then it sets them up for when they move on to pre-K and kindergarten and all of that. But I think that that's one of the words that gets thrown around, but that early childhood educators could enlighten us more on what play is and what role it plays in learning. So I would ask for that, although that's not part of a strategic plan. And also, the excellent early childhood education has two elements to it in terms of learning that I think are really important, and I would like us to have throughout our entire system, zero to 12, and that is creativity and imagination. And that can really be lit in those years. And I know there's a book that's titled, for years that are slightly older, but I always think about these years as the magic years. And this is when we can really develop the curiosity, the desire for learning, the persistence, not in the way that we talk about it even in the elementary level now, but that a child keeps at something because they really want to understand how it works, and understand themselves and their role in it. So that's what I wanted to contribute, and I thank you all very much, and I'm glad to be a part of this.
All right. Leon has a quick question.
I told the mayor I wouldn't speak there unless somebody said my name, which happened, so I'm not going to speak again, but I think Kathleen brings up a great point, which is that, like, honestly, we're looking at paying like 40 grand a year to let kid, let my daughter go and play for a few hours a day. Like, it's, and so, while I have complete confidence that our team can deliver a quality, or some quality education and great programming, the problem we don't have is that those kids aren't in there. And so if we don't have our kids in the pipeline, if we don't have them in a classroom or under our purview, then they're, we don't know what they're doing. And most of them are not doing what I know that the city's going to do. So while the questions are great about the programming, I, I have, that's not my concern, because I know that our team is in place that will deliver great programming. What we don't have is the kids under our purview. And so I, give me the kids under the purview. our purview, that's why, thanks.
So I'm going to stop the conversation and say, I appreciate the great work that the Task Force did, I thank the presenters for the great job that you did tonight. Obviously, people feel very passionate about this issue, and I think it's something that they're all very, very excited about, and looking at how this kind of comes together, and how the vision of early childhood education in the city of Cambridge can become something that's a shared vision for all of us to get behind. I do want to just say that we're not going to have the discussion that we were going to have about the school buildings, and I'm going to tell you why, that my office is working at the city manager's office to arrange visits to the new King Building in the Putnam Avenue Upper School, and we will have at that site, we will have a discussion there about the King Holman Building in the Cambridge Street Upper School. So we're going to postpone that aspect of it, but we're hoping, Rich, that we're going to be able to have those site visits in a relatively short.
Yes, I'd like to do it beginning now, first we get these houses, and we will also, and we can, invite us to where we are in the process.
And with that, I want to thank the school committee and the council and everybody that's with us tonight, and we are adjourned.
Good to see you.